Mr. Chris.
So is Roger.
Actually, that went on.
You did?
And Alderman Roy Wesley has not returned yet. I think he's still in the building. Ms. Christie, if you would like to continue.
Yes, thank you. So, in terms of the tree replacement requirements, as I was mentioning, if there's a redevelopment and they were providing the required trees to meet the code requirement at the time, and they're replacing that because they're conducting, they're doing a redevelopment of a site, they would not be penalized for that, but they would have to then meet the code. So, for example, if there are landscape islands, trees in the landscape islands that were already there, and they're removing those so that they can put in a new building and a new parking lot, they would then just simply have to meet the requirements for putting in a new parking lot and meeting those code requirements. What we found is that it's actually very burdensome for redevelopment, and in fact, we will end up having too many trees on a site, which actually then can detract from the actual property itself. So, you, we're covering up buildings essentially by keeping, you know, with the code the way it is, and that's not the intention, it's just to keep a balance here. Then, there is a, currently a 20% deviation that is allowed from the landscape and tree preservation regulations, but currently it's on individual or specific requirements, and so the proposal is to allow a 20% deviation of all of the landscaping requirements because every site is different, every layout is different, and therefore, there should be a little bit more flexibility in how the landscaping requirements are met, provided that the intent and all of those other requirements in terms of the purpose of the code are met. So, it just provides more flexibility.
Alderman, let me see.
How does that compare with the surroundings, our surrounding cities that we compete with? I'd say compete with, but we compete with for businesses.
Ms. Christie. In terms of the landscaping regulations?
That deviation, right? I've heard of businesses saying, like, "This is just way too much, and I may go to Elk Grove, or I may go to Bensonville." Are we, does 20% put us in line with them, make us more competitive? Would they be more apt to work with us?
Mr. Cage.
In a couple of the other communities that I have worked in, there's landscaping relief, and it's 20, 25%. Not necessarily our neighboring communities, but they do allow some flexibility. And I think Ms. Christie's point is valid, there's, we get some sites that you just can't fit all the landscaping on, and some of the new developments in the industrial park, you know, to build a new building, they've got to cut down a number of trees, and, you know, and rightly so, you know, to fit the building in, but some of the trees are substantial, plus all the other requirements, they just can't put all the trees on the property. So, some flexibility does...
Well, I'm just asking if we can move it up to 25. I mean, I, in my opinion, I've, I mean, I've heard brought up a couple of times, and so to me, 25...
I'm okay with the 25% flexibility, but my experience here is in two months, we're going to come back and say, "Staff's making all these decisions, why do they get to make all those decisions?" So, let's just make sure that we're clear.
Can you make a motion?
Right, that that's what you want to do.
I want to make a motion to increase the deviation from 20 to 25%, which is allowed from the landscaping and tree preservation regulations, not just individual requirements.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are there, are there any questions? Alderman Catalano, you have a question?
Only commercial.
Yeah. Mayor, please.
So, when we deviate, is there then a fee in lieu of, because they can't fit all the trees on, and it would be just ridiculous to try and have them put it all in one lot?
Ms. Christie.
Or are we just...
So, there is no fee in lieu requirement if it, if there's a deviation. However, I will say that with these other amendments that we've proposed, there is much greater flexibility, so the likelihood of needing that, that deviation decreases because we've embedded more flexibility in there with different species, dwarf varieties, and those types of things where they can change up the, the types of trees that they're using, so...
I just want to make it as attractive as possible, that's it. So, to me, 5% is not the end of the world, I'd rather be more attractive with your flexibility, what you've added with that. I just want to make it easy for people.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, are there any other questions? If not, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes, okay. You can continue.
And then, the, so, there were two, two ordinances that were part of the tree and landscaping amendments. The CDC did review and recommend approval of the ordinances that are in, or excuse me, the sections that are in Chapter 17 of the UDO. They did find that it was consistent with the UDO and the comprehensive plan, and so I just wanted to make sure that we noted that, because they did not review the comprehensive tree ordinance, it's not within their purview.
Is that...
That concludes that section.
Okay. Well, I'll start with making a motion to approve the text amendments as amended, changing the flexibility from 20 to 25%.
Second.
Okay, questions? Alderman Messina.
So, I had that question earlier, it is on page 54, it's number seven, it's service yard screening.
Ms. Kelly?
I apologize.
Can you clarify some, so, page 54, number seven? Can you clarify some of the changes that you're proposing there?
So, yes, so this is actually the trash enclosure requirements, which is actually on the next agenda item.
Okay, sorry.
But what we did was, we wanted, because it's, it's specific to landscaping, we wanted to keep that landscaping requirement in there, that we try and buffer some of those undesirable uses and soften the fences, but you'll actually see that that text is in the next amendment.
In the next part, okay.
Right, so it was retained, it was just moved.
Sorry, go ahead.
Any other questions? We got a motion, a second? Yeah. As amended, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes, that passes. Next, approval of multiple text amendments to Chapter 17 of the municipal code. Ms. Christie.
Thank you. Okay, so, the rest of these amendments were all heard by the CDC, and so we'll go through these. There is some revisions to definitions where we are removing a number of definitions. Part of them, some of them are because they're, we're trying to coordinate again with other definitions that we're using in coordinated sections of the code, and then we did add a couple clarifying definitions based on our amendments that we've proposed. So, landscaping and trees, business uses and public property. In terms of the community development, uh, Community Development Commission, and this was something that was also referenced in the boards and commissions, but the CDC has always had the charge of being the public hearing body for the stormwater ordinance because it is part of the UDO, and so what we did was went through the stormwater ordinance, and we clarified not only the CDC, but the issue that we have with this ordinance is that the appropriate parties were not referenced appropriately, and so the stormwater committee in the code was actually the DuPage County Stormwater Committee, and so what we did was, we just clarified those references, and instead of Director of Community Development, in some instances, it's City Engineer, and so it was really more of a clarification of those roles and responsibilities within this chapter. And so, you see a lot of markups, but again, it's really just to provide that clarification because we kind of just adopted the county ordinance without modifying it to the city And again, the Oversight Committee, that was a clarif, or a term that was used in the county ordinance, the CDC is a public hearing body, the City Council then is the ultimate decision-maker with regard to variances to the stormwater ordinance, and then again, the references to City Engineer.
Who's that?
That's all I have for this particular section. Shall I move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, as, with regards to home-based businesses, these amendments are really to clarify, the intention of the home-based business regulations is that the owner or operator of a home-based business actually is a full-time resident of the unit. That was not clear, and therefore, we wanted to make sure that was explicit in the code. Also, heavy equipment cannot be stored on-site, however, there is a reference in here that commercial vehicles can be stored, but in accordance with then the other section that regulates the commercial vehicle storage, and we're not proposing any change to that section, this is more of a reference, again, to try and kind of coordinate sections in the code. We did want to clarify the list of prohibited home-based businesses, and again, these are based on either relocation of some of the performance standards, or a clarification because of the performance standards, meaning that the performance standards were, would prohibit these types of businesses, but it wasn't very clear, so we just clarified it as part of the, the list in, in the code.
Alderman Messina.
I know this has come up before, but H? Do we specify in the code specifically what dictates if you're a car dealership? I know with DuPage County and dealing with them with Route 83, and they say that once you've sold, I think it's six vehicles, you're considered a dealership. So, I mean, do we spell that out in our code?
Well, so, so this is actually services, not sales, but, but in order for a car dealer to sell vehicles, they actually have to come to the city and get a sign-off that their zoning is appropriate for those sales. Now, that, that does not necessarily apply to online, I don't know exactly how that would work.
How about if you put a sign in the window, just revolving?
Not allowed, we don't allow those.
At all, meaning like, um...
Okay, yeah, go ahead, ask the question.
Sorry, meaning like, I have a hot location, my house sits on a great location, and I let Peter sell his car, he puts a "for sale" sticker in there, and the next week, I let Art sell his car, and two weeks later, I let somebody else, and I make money off of that.
Sure, so, we have a section in, it's actually Chapter 4, that talks about the residential short-term sales, and it's on your property, selling your...
I'll look at that second, okay.
Yes, so it's, it's essentially almost like a garage sale, or you could potentially sell your, but you can't, like, you know, rent out your property to sell. That, that's actually prohibited here.
Okay, I'll look at that second.
Alderman Sizbarski?
No, I was saying it was prohibited.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley.
This, home-based business clarification, a little more, home-based businesses where customers come to you?
Ms. Christie.
So, in certain instances, there can be, the code does allow, even now, a certain amount of customer interaction. So, for example, if a hair salon had, you know, if there was a chair, for example, then you would have customers come into your home, they would provide the service, and then they would leave. However, we've explicitly prohibited retail sales, so you couldn't have somebody coming in and having, you know, large numbers of people that are looking to buy, I don't know, jewelry, for example, you couldn't have people coming in, like a retail location where you sell directly from your home.
Okay, um...
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, services. Let's say, um, heating and air company, they do it out of their house, or any kind of business out of their house. That's legal, because it's a service business?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the, what type of business?
Heating and air, some, some companies bring their trucks home and, or any kind of service business.
Want to say that, that's fine, too. Okay, 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 back to the question, back to the question, let's focus.
So, so that's where the clarification of the Building and Construction Services with onsite material storage. Contractor offices are allowed regardless of what the, what the actual business does. So, if it's a, yeah, if it's a landscaping company and they have an office, that is a permitted home-based business. However, if it were a company that stored material on the property, then that would be prohibited, or equipment, for example, so like a contractor that, you know, has a Bobcat, for example, that would not be something that would be allowed to be stored on the property.
So, in that case, a vehicle is part of their business?
Right, so the vehicle would...
That's equipment.
Would be allowed to be stored on the property pursuant to then the other section that regulates commercial vehicles. So, this is, this is basically just, we're referencing the other section of the code, but we're not making any modifications to that section.
Okay.
Mayor, please.
So, if somebody has a Bobcat, I mean, construction guys, concrete guys, landscapers, all these guys have Bobcats because they do patio work, they take paver bricks and all that stuff. If they put their Bobcat in their garage, that's not allowed, or was allowed, and now it isn't allowed?
Well, it's tech...
Ms. Christie.
It's technically, that type of equipment is not intended to be part of a home-based business. The home-based business is where there's no visible evidence of the business, so it's not intended to allow the Bobcat, for example, in a garage, as well as other equipment or supplies, because deliveries, so we also have a provision in here, and again, this is already what's in the code, but I mean, there, there's really no delivery of, of goods that is supposed to be allowed on, you know, say a flatbed, for example, because again, that would then be counter to the idea behind a home-based business.
Mayor, please.
So, I know we got a lot of guys in town who have trucks and whatnot, and they may go to the shop the night before, pick up the equipment, some of the trucks are within code, some maybe a little larger, they might pop them into their garage. So, that's not going to happen, they're not allowed anymore.
Well, so, are we, are we talking about home-based businesses, or are we talking about just, you know...
Well, just, let's say, I work for a contractor, I went to the shop, boss is going to send me a job out in Kankakee or some, long distance, so instead of going back to the city, go to the shop, on the way in from the job today, hey, put this in your truck, bring it to my driveway.
This provision doesn't apply in that instance. This is specific to home-based businesses.
But again, in clarification, I think, so what is, I guess I would have to ask, what is the truck that you're driving? What, what is the vehicle? If you're, if you're coming with a, you know, six-ton dump truck?
Well, no, but I have, let's say, Bobcats come on those trailers, right? So, I'm coming down the street, I have a legal truck for the driveway, I pop the Bobcat in the, in the garage with the trailer, and hook it at night, and hook it in the morning, I mean, I don't know, I've just...
Ms. Christie.
That would just be subject to the commercial vehicle regulations, which is in another section of the code, and we're not, we're not proposing any change to that, so there would be no, if, and I, I don't recall if you're allowed to do it now, but if you're allowed to do it now, you're still going to be able to do it, because we're not making any revision to that.
Because we had, this is another discussion, another long one, we started getting all these plumbers and whatnot, and their trucks were a little taller, and listen, we're going to, I'm just a little nervous, I don't want to start getting, it's hard to get jobs these days, and good jobs, and you got guys that are trying to raise their families and stuff, and, or ladies, and I don't want to...
Well, but I think the distinguishing point here is home-based businesses versus...
Just, well, a guy working, but that's, you know, I could be working for a company, and my, oh wait, oh, you can't keep the truck on you? Well, you know what, I need a guy who can keep the truck, I can't keep, I don't have a spot for it here at the shop or some nonsense, and a guy gets laid off.
That's not going to change.
Right, that's not...
All right, okay, just, sometimes if a change made in something else affects something else, I just want to make sure we're not going to have, you know, 20 plumbers coming in here next week yelling at us, because, you know, their bosses require them to take the truck and be on call and all that stuff.
Yeah. So, I have, moving on to the next section, so, then we have modifications to the outdoor storage, refuse collection, and loading areas. We did reorganize the text here to clarify specific regulations for each of these. We do limit the location of the storage, refuse collection, and loading areas to the rear and side yards, does allow the development administrator some discretion, which was part of the issue we had with the prior, or the current text, is that, one, we don't allow variations, and we have no flexibility in terms of being able to administer it, so this would allow some flexibility in being able to provide a proper location. And I tried to not have all text on my slides, so we have a little...
I hope that's not in town.
I was going to say, is there a picture?
That's behind George.
I have no comment.
Oh, my God.
This is an old photograph, but, and then, we do clarify that landscaping is required unless it's impractical, which again, provides us some flexibility. Because there were so many different locations where these requirements were, we do clarify that the enclosures have to be a solid wall or fence where, you know, it is basically opaque. There was another section that required it to be of decay-resistant wood, and so, we've just moved that over, and that, we do, we did put in there that we wanted to encourage some shared refuse containers or enclosures, at least to avoid having each individual property owner having their own, but again, that's, that's something that they would have to determine.
So, and can I ask a question? In, in the case of the, the enclosures, let's go to Georgetown, and so there's, you kind of brought it up, whatever, 20 unit owners over there, where does the burden fall, on each individual unit, renter, leasor, or the property owner? So, the, when the issue comes up, we're going to go to the property owner, and we're going to force him, we're going to send out staff, and we're going to look at it and go, "We really believe you should have four different enclosures," based on the, the length of the store, or the layout of the store, or the square footage of the, or building, I should, okay, thank you, that's all.
And those are, those are the amendments. As I mentioned, CDC did recommend approval of these text amendments as well, they did find it was consistent with the UDO in terms of the intent, and then also consistent with comprehensive plan goals.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to...
Go ahead.
Well, we can always make a motion, and I always ask questions. I'll make a motion, then I'll answer a question. All right, make a motion to approve the multiple text amendments to Chapter 17 of the municipal code.
Second.
Okay, questions? Alderman Sorrentino?
Thank you, Alderman Woods.
Do you have a question?
Uh, Ms. Christie, I'm looking at this clarification of home-based business regulations, is there anything in these ordinances that holds a home-based business at the same level of a commercial business as far as inspections and occupancy certificates?
Ms. Christie.
So, that part is actually in Chapter 4, which is our Commercial Activity Regulations. We do require home-based businesses to register with the city on an annual basis, we are going to begin rolling that out, as we know that we've been implementing the Commercial Occupancy Program, and so that's been going well, and we've been making some tweaks to that program. So, home-based businesses will be required to register, they'll also be required to sign off on an affidavit that states that they meet all of the code requirements, and again, they'll have to do it on an annual basis. If we do receive complaints, they're not subject to an inspection unless we receive a complaint, and then we'll go and we'll investigate and figure out if there actually is a violation of the code.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messina.
Page 148. So, now I've mentioned this a few times, and I think we, it would be a good problem for, Wooddale would be considered a hub for Airbnb, but on C, we have, we have something listed as tourist homes and lodging houses that's prohibited. Could you clarify that?
So, yes, and I'm trying to recall the conversation, because I believe we had the conversation when we were doing the Commercial Activity text amendments and, as well, but in terms of tourist homes and lodging houses, that would actually encompass the Airbnb, and I think that's what we had talked about at that time, because I think we were looking at, do we need to incorporate any language into that chapter? And we said, "No, it's actually covered by this language here."
Can we, can we be more specific? I mean, are people going to understand? I mean, I, I thought this was written in 1928, tourist homes and lodging houses, so that...
If there's a better terminology that you would prefer...
I don't know, I, I, it's, yeah, could we...
We can work, yeah, we can work on trying to come up with...
Okay. Got one more.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, going back to that picture that we had a while back with all the garbage outside, yeah. So, behind Georgetown Shopping Center, we have some issues back there, did we check that out?
Mr. Cage, would you like to take that question?
I'd love to take that question. We have, we have multiple issues out there, especially in the area referencing. I'm essentially waiting for this text amendment, because the dumpster police, which is me, I'm waiting for this clarification, because we've got, we've got a lot of people who are asking questions, they read the ordinance, they're unclear what they need to do, I spend a lot of time talking to people, this is going to clarify things. Once I've got, hopefully, you know, if you guys concur, once this is approved, it gives me the ability to go and follow up on what we were talking about a couple of years ago, because that deadline's coming up. There are multiple issues at multiple locations, and Alderman Catalano hit on one of the key locations, so if the text amendment is approved, conversations will be had, and that area is a prime area which this ordinance is going to drastically affect with those dumpster enclosures. Problems like you're seeing right now will go away, because they'll either build the dumpster enclosures, or they won't, if they don't, they're going to get fined, once they build them, they have to, you know, they have to maintain them, and the garbage has to go in, so...
And when's the deadline for that?
The deadline for that is January the 22nd.
Have we said?
Do you have a follow-up?
No, that's...
Okay, Alderman, well, Mayor Police was next.
If you want, you're on to go, Mayor, but go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in the spirit of just making sure to don't blindside people, are we having another communication? Because I know, we're already getting approached by townhouse associations and all this about, like, "Oh, no, it's here," and...
Did it wait until the last minute?
Of course, right, so, is there a plan to communicate that?
Yes, that absolutely is a plan, so I was, I was waiting for this evening to discuss to see what the direction was on the text amendment, going to be reaching out, and obviously, we, we talked prior about, you know, putting the industrial park kind of on the back burner for now, because we're focusing on Irving Park, Wooddale, and the multifamily properties, so I was waiting for this. I know people in the industrial park are waiting for clarification, so if we get a positive recommendation, we move forward, there'll be a flurry of letters and emails coming out of my department to the various businesses, industrial park, et cetera, multifamily, because I know there's a lot of questions, and some people have been moving forward with the enclosures, probably not the number that we want, but they'll be going out probably next week.
Mayor, please.
All right, I think it's clear. Be a good neighbor, keep your areas clean. My question is, I've had some complaints from people telling me that where they go and shop, when it rains or whatever, the ceilings, the roof, the ceilings are leaking inside the stores. Has that become a, I don't know, life safety issue nuisance, something that the city can basically step in?
Mr. Cage, do you want to answer that question?
I think that's a, a conversation maybe for another, for another period of time, but I just, I share the same concerns.
I've heard at least four times now in two weeks from different residents, so I'm, I'm like, okay, maybe, is there something we can do or not? Find another night, no problem.
I share the same concerns.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, a second, if there's no more questions, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Substate.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
To approve multiple text amendments to Chapter 17 of the municipal code.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, train station signage, December 14th, City Hall electronic signs, December 14th, Thorndale Corridor rezoning, winter of 2018. Anything else somebody else would like to put on there? No? Bearing none, I make a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, we adjourn.